Good evening, everyone. I am calling to order the meeting of the Stevens Point Area School District School Board for April 13th, 2015. Roll call and verification of quorum, please.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Evil.
Here.
Ms. Ehrler.
Here.
Ms. Faxon.
Here.
Mr. Presley.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Sherrick.
Here.
Ms. Totten.
Here.
Eight members present, we have a quorum.
The next item is the approval of the agenda. I didn't one contact. Anyone have something they want adjusted or changed?
I do.
Meg?
Yep. I would like the board, I'll make a motion to remove 7C. I have provided all of the board members with copies. Well, I guess I'll see if there's a second before I have a conversation.
I'll second.
I've provided all board members with a copy of Wisconsin Statutes 19.84, which is the required public notice under the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law. I've also provided board members with a, with the applicable pages. Wisconsin Open Meetings Law, A Compliance Guide. It was issued August 2010, Department of Justice Attorney General J.B. Van Hollen. There are a number of specifics in here that I believe demonstrate that the notice provided on that agenda item is not adequate. But the one that I will refer all of you to is on the, it's page 12 at the bottom. So it's, and it begins, the heading is Generic Agenda Items. I will read. "The Attorney General has advised that the practice of using such designations as mayor comments, alderman comments, or staff comments for the purpose of communicating information on matters within the scope of the governmental body's authority is at best at the outer edge of lawful practice and may well cross the line to become unlawful." Rude Correspondence, March 5, 2004. Because members and officials of governmental bodies have greater opportunities for input into the agenda-setting process. The public has, than the public has, they should be held to a higher standard of specificity regarding the subjects they intend to address. Thompson Correspondence, September 3rd, 2004.
Okay. So your concern is the lack of specificity?
There is no specificity. I have no idea as a board member whether it's a general discussion about board member comments, or there are specific board comments that are being raised, or if the individual who has put it on the agenda is intending to make specific comments. But there's no way the public, there's no way that the media has any idea of the substance of what that is, and they are not able to be here in attendance, or to be present to respond to or learn of. So I would ask that that be restricted from the agenda. It's a violation of open meetings law.
Okay.
And we expose ourselves to liability.
Is there more discussion?
I ability.
So you are asking us, just to make sure I know, I'm listening to you correctly, you are asking us to only speak about items that are on our agenda?
You betcha.
Okay. Just, just want to remember, if you can bring back two weeks ago at our meeting, just to let you know, okay?
Okay. I don't know what the banter is, but we need to vote on this. So let's, by the way, Mr. Presley, whether, no matter what happens, is welcome to speak at public comments like anybody else. He's a, he's a citizen as well as a board member. So, any other, all right, let's take a vote.
Mr. Evil.
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Presley.
No.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
No way.
Ms. Totten.
No.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Motion carries five to three.
Are you signing up for public comments, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. You know what, guys? We're not gonna chat any more than usual, please, during the meeting. Let's go with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
You do need a motion to approve the amended agenda, because her motion was to remove an item, not to approve the agenda.
I need a motion to amend.
I will move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Ehrler.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Presley.
No.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Again, no.
Ms. Totten.
No.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Evil.
Yes.
Motion carries five to three.
Pledge of Allegiance is next, if you'd rise with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had no kids. We canceled them so our meeting could move faster.
So we have a few recognitions this evening. First of all, I don't, I know that John Mo from the city was running late, but I don't know if John is here. John here? John, come on up. And I don't know if Marge, Bill, and Gary are here with you? Just you.
Bill.
How are you?
Very good.
Good. Thanks for coming, John. So you get to turn around and face the camera. There we go. John, you want to introduce?
This is Bill Zemdars. He is a member of the Smodjeski Health Fund.
So we're recognizing the Smodjeski Health Fund. John is responsible in great part for exercising that particular fund along with the district and a committee or a team of people. And I just want to read a little bit about the Smodjeski Health Fund, and Miss Faxon has a plaque to present to you. The Smodjeski Health Fund has been operated, has been in operation through the city clerk's office for the past 33 years, helping members of Portage County, including students of the Stevens Point Area Public School District, maintain their health when assistance was needed. The fund currently has over eighty families signed up for assistance in addition to providing financial support for other programs such as Healthy Smiles, maternal and child health, and Project Fresh Start programs. The main role of the clerk's office in conjunction with the Smodjeski Health Fund is to assist with the dispersment of vitamins and toothbrushes to children and students. This year, sixty-four children received them through the assistance of the Health Fund. Healthy Smiles, which receives a yearly donation of $2,500 from the Health Fund, have assisted forty students in providing 134 sealants this year. The Smodjeski Fund has also helped programs to help children with their eyeglasses. And it's for these reasons and this very long relationship that we have with the Smodjeski Health Fund that we wanted to recognize you as one of our partners. So thank you, John. Bill, thank you very much.
In recognition of the significant and profound contributions to the district for advancing the education of all its students and for helping us fulfill our mission to prepare each student to be successful, deep heartfelt thanks and gratitude. Thank you so much.
Bill or John, do you want to say anything about the fund?
If I could.
Yeah, please, tell me.
The Smodjeski Fund, like Attila has mentioned, has been around in my office for thirty-three years, but the success of that program, a lot deals with the members of the committee. And if I could, which I'm going to, I just wanted to mention those members, Gary Garsky, Marge Molsky, Bill Zemdars, Attila, Tom Owens, who fills in when Attila can't make it, Larry Lves, and the former principal of the Celli, Jeffrey Bregman. I'd also like to thank our advisors, financial advisors, Comptroller Treasurer Cory Lattick and Greg Henning, and also Healthy Smiles Representative Deanna McKinnon.
Great. Thank you, John. Thank you, Bill. And if you can, I don't know if you can navigate that, but the board members would like to shake your hand and thank you as well.
Picture first. Picture first. Picture.
Oh, picture first. Sorry. Thank you. You're gonna take your picture, Bill. So there you go. Sorry about that. There you go. If you want to look right at the end. Wonderful. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much.
So much for your work, Sarah.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
So our next group is a couple of teachers, actually speech and language pathologists, who are gonna accept the certificate on behalf of the entire department. Is, I think Jackie Zolkekarche and Joyce Thurman, see here? Are either of those two here? Jackie, are you here? Come on up, Jackie. Are you here? There we go. All right. I'm good. So Jackie and Joyce are representing a much larger group of people who perform a very specialized service for students in our district, and they are speech and language pathologists. And the faculty at the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point, the School of Communicative Disorders, have selected our district's speech and pathology department as the 2015 recipient of the Friends of Communicative Disorders Award. And we wanted to present you both with a certificate as well as one for your department. I don't know that you have a central place, but you can put it some, maybe a traveling certificate that you can put someplace. And we really appreciate what it is that you do for our specialized folks. So we're gonna give them a round of applause.
Just that we have a very open staff, from regular education teachers to other special education teachers who speak on panels, and we're very blessed to have the partnership with UWSP Center for Communicative Disorders.
Great. Okay. Let's take a, let's take a photo and wrap, and then you can meet the board members. Thank you again. This way here.
Thank you. Thank you. Both of my kids were the recipients of your services, so I really, when I say thank you, I really mean it. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So now we want to recognize a teacher and a student for something very unique that occurred. Carrie Vries and her student Robert, is it Heinz or Hints? Hints, come on up. Carrie and Robert. So you can kind of follow what the others did. So Carrie is a science teacher at Ben Franklin Junior High School, and her student Robert had a, have a very unique opportunity, and it was because of Robert that this opportunity arose. And we want to give an awful lot of credit to Robert as a student in this district. He found out that there was an opportunity to work with Stanford University, that's right, the one in Palo Alto, in developing a microscope curriculum for the very, for a very inexpensive origami microscope. The microscopes are intended to be shipped to third-world countries to enable all students to have the opportunity to have access to better science programs and make the microscopic world available to everyone. As such, the curriculum that Carrie and Robert developed will be used by students in third-world countries, which will open doors for future scientists who may not have the opportunity to develop the skills or to reach their full potential in the world of science. So we have essentially, if I got this right, a young man who found this opportunity, brought it to Carrie, and the two of them took it and ran with it. And now there's a group of kids in the third world that are gonna benefit from your work. Did I have that right?
It's in the works.
Wonderful. Well, maybe you want to talk a little bit more about it, Carrie.
It's just really very exciting. We're in the very beginning stages. We've had small groups of students come in after school to create the microscopes. We started working with prepared slides, and I brought a few early so I could share and show. And so we are now gonna be moving into, students have brought in things to look at, and then we'll be going outside and using them, and then sharing that with the lab and communicating with them for where we, where we go. And the really great thing about this is Robert is just such a great mind, and he represents our community so well. He's going places. The really, other really cool thing is his engineering mind. He's now developing a light source to be able to see these better. And he brought in this little tiny platform that is a circuit, and he's setting up a prototype already, engineering the next part that maybe we could send to Stanford and add as an accessory to this tool. That would be very inexpensive. So it's just amazing, and it's a great opportunity.
Let's give it up for Robert. There you go. So it's in recognition of that. Do you have anything you want to say at all?
No.
Who are they? Maybe you want to introduce them real quick, because we can do that.
My mom's over there, Susan, and my dad over there.
Welcome, and congratulations. Thank you very much. Okay, so you need to look into that camera and smile. There you go.
Angel, see if his grandparents are here, because I think his grandparents are here. Attila, I think Robert's grandparents are here.
Oh, do you want to introduce your grandparents?
There's my grandpa, Robert Cole, my grandma, Judy Colom.
Welcome.
Can't forget the grandparents. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
What a cool idea. Thank you for running with it.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm glad that we got you in here. So cool. Great job. Keep coming forward.
Thank you.
Always, always a good one. Thanks, Kim. You're awesome. That's so exciting.
To keep things all in the family, we'd like to invite Mark Vries, Carrie's husband, who's also a teacher in the district. Come on up. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you.
Mark was selected by the Wisconsin Technology Education Association Awards Committee to receive their Award of Excellence for demonstrating outstanding commitment to technology education and for being an exemplary teacher within the state of Wisconsin. Mark has a master's degree from the University of Wisconsin. His educational experience includes teaching a variety of classes ranging from energy transportation to communications technology at both the junior and senior highs. Mark has also a certified Project Lead the Way teacher through Gateway to Technology. Mark's been teaching at Ben Franklin Junior High for the past fourteen years and is credited for being a leader and advocate for Project Lead the Way. He has taught and mentored many staff members needing extra help and support learning technology, and has made countless contributions to enhance the technology and engineering departments district-wide. Mark creates an ideal and effective learning environment for students by providing opportunities to learn new content and skills. Mark is innovative in his approach to teaching, and the respect and positive rapport he develops with students is second to none. Mark has been awarded the Golden Apple Award and Teacher of the Month Award. Mark is involved in many professional activities and volunteers regularly with the district as well as within the community, and it's for all of these reasons that the Wisconsin Technology Education Association awarded Mark the Award of Excellence. Congratulations.
I have to give credit to a fellow district employee that nominated me, Joe Less, who teaches technology and engineering over at PJ's. Nominated for me. It was a lot of work putting stuff in, a lot of curriculum goes in. I was one of five chosen throughout our Wisconsin Technology Engineering Association, and I was awarded that at the end of March at our international conference in Milwaukee. So it was five others as well, so it was a lot of work to put in of what, you don't really know what you do until you have to write it all out. And over the last years of getting everything together, the curriculum, everything, yeah, there's a lot of work that goes in it. But I was very humbled by the whole thing, and I just do what every teacher does every single day. We all do it for the right reasons, and it's all for the kids. And so I just say thank you.
Thank you, Ren. So there you go.
Sure.
So are there any other family members that came, that's here that you want to introduce?
My son Carter's over there, too.
Carter?
He's the photographer.
There you go.
Ah, there you go. Hey, Carter.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you.
You bet. Thanks. Thank you very much.
You were awesome way back when. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
So is Brenda Varga here? Brenda's a member of our food service staff. And Quinn Casey? I know Quinn is here. Sheldon Hall? Come on up, Brenda. Quinn will come with the other way.
Myself.
Right here she is. Right up here. There we go. So Quinn is a sophomore student at SPAS, and Brenda is in our food service department at SPAS. And when, we generally recognize a staff member through a student every month. And so Quinn nominated Brenda, and she just did it because Brenda's a pretty awesome person to kids at SPAS. So I don't know if you want to say anything about that?
Yeah. Brenda just always has a smile on her face, and she reaches out to all of the students at SPAS. I know all of my peers really appreciate her, and I think she just makes the school a much happier environment for everyone.
Congratulations, Brenda. Beat this, so that everybody hears, and Mrs. Varga hears what it is that you really think. Correct. Well, actually, you could say that right there.
This certificate is awarded to Brenda Varga, Food Service Stevens Point Area Senior High. This student staff recognition is presented to you for the positive and lasting impact you have made on SPAS students. We are a family of teachers and learners. You have taught our students the essentials of how to learn, the values of how to live a good life, and how they might pay it forward, with heartfelt thanks and gratitude.
There you go. All right. So if you want to have a picture? Oh, there we go. So Quinn, you want to introduce your folks? One of them?
My dad, Brian Casey.
There we go. Brian, Brenda, did you come with family?
No, I came with my two bosses.
All right. Lori and Paula.
There you go.
Thank you, Lori and Paula. Welcome. Thank you again for so many members elected.
Congratulations. Thank you. Oh, girl. She's really cool. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Great job. We need it. Thank you so much.
So there's always a little bit of a twist to recognizing, when students want to recognize staff members. And so this month we had, well, it was the last meeting we had actually SPAS and couldn't make it, but now we're doing two of them. So this month it was McKinley. So when Ms. Mayo, our principal at McKinley, went to a student, it wasn't just one student that wanted to come forward, it was four. So Kevin, you want to come on in with four students? Eric, Nick, Taylor, and Jackie. There we go. Okay. So each of these four have something that they would like to read about. Kevin, their teacher, Kevin Hop, and I told you I was gonna start with you, Eric, right? All right, go ahead.
This teacher has taught me a lot about responsibility and respect, and has made a huge impact in my life. He most of all showed me how to succeed in life and how to fail. He says you should have a dream in life, and I think that's the coolest thing a teacher can say out of all the things a teacher would say. I feel that this teacher has a child's side of him and a professional side that shows you how to act and be responsible. My most favorite part about this teacher is that he talks about things not to do and makes funny examples of them. I feel lucky to have a teacher that is really good at math, and you can ask him anything. That's why it's gonna be hard to have a different math teacher next year in a middle school. I love to have a teacher who is also in running and can tell stories and teach you about running in general. He also tells stories about things that happen in his home or teaching career. People think he is this big, scary, mean guy, but he is not. A teacher who has made a huge impact in my life, and I admire Mr. Hop.
All right, we have Nick next. There you go.
Mr. Hop is one of the best teachers I ever had, but he is strict. If you do not get your homework done, you will get on his bad side. When I started to get my homework, and we started to get along. Mr. Hop may be scary at first, but when you get to know him, he is a really nice guy. Mr. Hop helps my education by increasing my math skills. He impacted my life by helping me with problems that I faced over the school year. He also did a lot more to help me during this year, like helping me with my skillset problem-solving. And in, and in the beginning of the year, I did not really care about my grades, but now I do, thanks to Mr. Hop helping me throughout the year. I want to say thank you to Mr. Hop for helping me with my education.
All right.
There we go.
Jackie, sorry, Jackie.
Mr. Hop is the teacher that made a difference in my life. Last year, I didn't do my work, missed school. This year, I am the opposite, all thanks to Mr. Hop. He pushes me to be better than I was last year. He also, he also tells kids that you should have a dream and set life goals for that dream. On top of that, he tells stories from his past life, and he always tells us not to give up and guess. He has a sign in his room that says, "Mr. Hop's Top 10 Keys to Success." That sign helps me not to give up. Mr. Hop tells us to read or to work on our homework instead of talking and not working on our skills. Also, kids think that he is, that he is mean and strict, when he really isn't unless you, unless you do bad things or you don't really know. In all honesty, I do, too. He can be mean, he can be funny, nice, and crazy when it comes to force. Not to mention, he has all these posters around the room, around, posters around the room, around, about being successful, and about not underestimating yourself. I can look at all of those posters and imagine to try harder and try my best and not to quit. Even though it is hard for me to work and learn things, he says it clearly in my other teachers' day, he is willing to help kids and find ways to help them learn better. And he is at his desk if kids need to ask a question or a question. He is a, he is like a super teacher. He helps the students. Eventually, when he has had enough of kids misbehaving, he will pull them aside in the hall and talk to you. When kids get pulled aside, they think, and they think, and sometimes they know that they're in trouble. If you do your homework and behave, you shouldn't have to see Mr. Hop.
Go away.
This teacher has impacted my life in many ways, not just in school, but in my life. He has taught me so much. He is such an inspiration to me, and I'm sure a lot of other students could say the same. I now think more about my future than I ever did before. I didn't choose this teacher because he is my homeroom teacher, but because he deserves to be recognized for his hard work and how much he encourages his students. Also, how he inspires them. He does not just inspire the kids, but other teachers, too. He is one of the best teachers. Now, Mr. Hop, I want to thank you for everything that you have done for me. I'm sure all of your other students could say the same.
So we're gonna have you, I'm gonna ask each of you to introduce your parents, so if you're ready. So you, sorry.
That's my mom, Gwen, and my sister.
Welcome. Eric?
Um, that's my dad, Sam, over there, and that's my dad, Paul, or I don't know.
There you go.
And that's my grandma, Trudy, over there, or, yeah.
Welcome.
And that's my grandpa, I think, yeah.
Anybody else? Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Nick.
My mom is Karen Freistack. She's in the back trying to embarrass me.
Doing a good job.
My mom's over there, and then my boyfriend, Ron, and then my brother, Morgan.
Welcome. Welcome. So Amanda Mayo is our principal at McKinley right there. And Kevin, I'm going to have you introduce some of your teammates and colleagues who are here.
My colleagues decided to come, Jill Proftagel's here, April Tritz, Kelly Thomas, and Dean Hodston. I've had the honor to work with some of them for over 12 years, so it's been fun. My wife, Daylin, is in the back with my son Ben, who's in first grade, and my daughter Sarah, who's sitting in the back, is in third grade. And my wife also, actually my parents, and they came, so my dad, and then my mom, Lara Hop, is in the back. So, thank you all for coming.
So I just have two things to say. First of all, you don't know this, but this weekend I had the occasion to run into one of your teammates. Name will not be spoken out loud, let me hear it from the individual. But I will tell you that the person told me and went on, I actually timed it, it was several minutes, about the awesome team with whom they worked. And it was real, it was specific, it was authentic, and it was about the people with whom this person worked. It was not about the person themselves. And it really struck home to me what a great team this team in particular is, but many of the teams that we have is, you saw with Mark and Carrie and others. So that's one thing. It takes a team to do what you folks do. And the second thing is that this isn't just about Kevin or the team, although it is. It's really about these kids giving testimony to how their lives have been impacted. And there isn't anything greater for us to hear than this. There isn't a test score, there isn't a piece of paper, documentation, an award, better than hearing your own students say, "You've affected my life in a way that makes a huge difference." I'm willing to publicly speak about it, and that's amazing. So congratulations to the four of you, to Kevin, to your team as well, and Amanda, let's give her a round of applause.
Take a picture.
We'll come get them.
Good job. Congratulations.
Don't leave when you're on it.
Thank you so much. Hey, no, no, I want to hug. Great job. Awesome. You guys were great. You did phenomenal. Great job. He's really not that scary though, is he? You're really not that scary, are you? Awesome, thank you so much.
So what I'd like you to do is give those to him somehow, so he hasn't heard the scrapbook.
They actually, I'll get them, some of them actually made copies and gave them to me. I guess I'd just like to say too, this isn't really about me, this is about the kids. This is why we do it. And these guys, I'm very proud of them for coming up here. They were nervous, but you guys did a great job.
Alright, big smile for the camera. Thanks again Kevin. See you later guys. So in the program, we had indicated that we are going to recognize the 2015 Division One State Champion Boys Basketball Team from SPAS and their coach. But because of baseball commitments on many of those players and the coaches part, we're going to postpone that till a later date. And we have a donation that we'd like to recognize. The district has received a donation from Gary and Cara Dickrell, the amount of $400 for the Kennedy School Backpack Project. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is public comments, and I will read you in order of people who signed up. We have five people who've signed up, so we'll do three minutes each, please. The first to speak is Jack Stoskoff.
Thank you, Jack Stoskoff, 2431 Sunrise, Corden Plover. I've come here tonight to thank you all for the serious consideration that you gave to me for my application for the superintendent job. I'd also like to thank the teachers, the support staff, the SPAS Student Senate, the administrators, the local businesses, the community members that came to the open session on Wednesday, March 11th, to hear my perspectives, as well as ask me some very good questions. I truly wish you all the best of luck in finding a quality candidate to serve the community, the schools, and more importantly, our students. But the primary reason for me to come here tonight is to sincerely thank you for the generous opportunity that you gave me and the serious consideration that you gave for my application. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jen. Next is Josh.
Well, I have to say, I get an opportunity to travel around the state to about, around 36 school districts, and you know, Attila's statement really kind of summed it up. It never gets old seeing the interactions between the students and awards and presentations they give to the staff, or frankly, the interactions a public school has with the community. I mean, that's what you're here for. That right there was a beautiful product of exactly what you're doing, what you're doing well. So I want to congratulate you on that. That was a great presentation to watch. The reason I'm here is to talk on behalf of the Stevens Point Area Education Association tonight, and in particular, to a document that's in your packet. It's 9E6.
Josh, can you introduce yourself and where you...
Sure, it's on the record. My first name is Josh, last name is Scooball. And again, I'm a director for Region Two. I'm here to represent the Stevens Point Area Education Association. So the document in particular I'm looking at addressing, has several statements in it that I would like to talk about. Two of your board members were present for that conversation. Your HR director Florence was also present for that conversation. In the document itself, there are some statements that are made in there that I would like to clarify, make sure, prior to decisions you're going to make later this evening, you know exactly where we're at and where the conversation for the evening was at, at least from our perspective. That evening, we talked about the very things that we saw tonight, about the great staff and the great things you do in public ed. In fact, we recognize the most valuable attribute that you have as an organization is unlocking those opportunities for students, giving them the ability to reach the full potential. It's the greatest equalizer you can give them in society, right? No matter where you come from, no matter what economic background you're from, no matter where your zip code is, where you live, that's the equalizer. And that's what the Stevens Point Area Education Association shared that evening, and talking about shared goals we had. We believed we had a conversation with board members that also shared that same conversation, same challenges, same struggles we want to see accomplished and taken care of, so that you can retain the best quality staff, including those you saw tonight, being presented to various awards by students. We believe the process for negotiations has taken a long time for various reasons. We recognize that timeframe being complicated for both sides. I want to assure you from SPAEA side of things, we couldn't be interested in more than moving this along quickly for the district's sake, for the teacher's sake, and being able to get to everything needed with your day-to-day jobs as well. This document reflects a conversation that appears there was a notice of being imposed upon at the conclusion of this.
Thanks, Josh.
I would note that when we had that conversation, the meeting concluded with both board members and with Florence, and I would ask them to share otherwise, that there was going to be a conversation about everything that was shared that evening, all the concerns that went into that conversation. The conversation didn't end with a conversation about imposing, as this document states. We believed there was going to be a conversation about potentially wrapping up three years of settlements that are back, and potentially starting for the first time in quite some time on next year's conversation. That was part of it. I would also note that the four years noted in here, we didn't necessarily say we're not open to conversations about a single. We came up with an offer for a four-year. It happened that evening, we asked for consideration, we asked for a full board conversation about it, and that's what we believed was going to happen. And so I would ask that that is what happens tonight. We would really appreciate what we talked about that evening, what staff felt was discussed and was heard that evening. We would ask that that be talked about tonight, considered, and we get a decision. We would hope that there isn't a decision to simply impose a contract offer, as we do not believe we were at impasse, and we made that clear during the evening. And I believed all three parties on the administrative side agreed to that. And so hopefully that's where we're at, and the miscommunication that's in here is discussed when you get to that part of the agenda. Thank you for the time.
Thanks, Josh. Sam?
My name is Sam Levin. I'm here to speak regarding the superintendent's remarks, Agenda Item 7D, 73 specifically. I'm going to officially ask that this matter be postponed till the April 27th meeting, and listed as an action item in closed session or brought up in a special closed session of the board. And once again, like I said, it's Agenda Item 73. I had talked to President Faxon, asked her if she would hold the board on suspending the rules in order for me to be able to respond when Dr. Winiger makes his remarks, because I am named in that, and we have some differences. But I'm requesting this change because I don't want to waste the school board's time. It's an important matter, it needs to be brought to light, and it's up to the board whether or not they want to suspend it and bring it back at another time, or table it and just leave it go into oblivion. Regardless, the board needs to concentrate on other important issues and should be logged down with a he said, she said situation. But having made this statement, I withdraw my request for suspension of the rules, providing this item as either suspended or tabled. If it is not, I will return with it at another time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Pat Leahy?
Hi, Pat Leahy, 5508 Elmwood Avenue. I'm speaking here as the president of the Stevens Point Area Education Association. First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. Kind of going off of what Josh said, I mean, I know our last bargain session of the board members that were there, Chris, I know you were there, it was very emotional, and I have talked to a few of the board members since then. We don't have a lot of time as an association to get together and plan and strategize and everything. Our proposal kind of came to light right before we met with you guys. I thought it was a really good idea, because we're talking about four one-year bargains. We wanted to move along, to get done all the past three years, to move another year forward. We want an opportunity to talk and bargain. I know that Act 10 has changed all the rules, but there still is the ability to bargain. And what the Board of Education has done with us has not been bargaining. It's been take it or leave it. And I think we need to get down to, you know, to conversate with each other, to talk, to see what we can do, to give and take. But just to say this is it, take it or leave it, I don't think that's the best way to do it. I would be hopeful that we could, that the board could look at what our proposal was as a board, and have some conversation. But we haven't really had these conversations. And we haven't been here as an association to talk, we've been relatively silent. We've been trying to talk behind the scenes with individual board members. But we want you guys to listen to us. Obviously, nothing's been easy since Act 10. The people down in Madison who voted for Act 10, I don't know what they were thinking, but I don't think it's got any easier for anyone. But we still need to come together and talk, an association, the administration, the school board, and we need to try to get on the same page. And that's what we were trying to do with our offer. You know, that you guys were trying to push two years at us, we weren't ready for it, we decided, hey, let's take it, let's move ahead, let's see what we can do. So please take that into consideration. I don't think, you know, after we had that meeting, there were a lot of people that were very hopeful that things were going to move forward. I mean, a lot of people contacted me and said, "This is great, you know, we can hopefully move things forward, let's talk about four years, let's get it all done, the board's going to listen to us, let's do it all in one package." And then to see this on the agenda just kind of goes to show that you guys don't want to do it. Please consider our offer, please consider that we're trying to help out too, we're trying to do what we can, we're trying to move things forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Jeff Presley is next.
Let the record reflect that I'm speaking as, just as a citizen. It's customary for the exiting board members, this is my last meeting, to say something. I just want to say thank you to the public for the privilege and the honor of serving you on this school district. I wish everybody on the board the best in making great decisions for our students. But thanks to Ms. Earler, I get three minutes, so I might as well talk about several things. Number one, stop attacking your own. Stop it. Your focus is to be on the students and our staff, and that's not happening. Wasting time about whether or not I'm going to say thank you to the public, it's a waste of five minutes of the board's time. Stop it. You got agenda items that this is going to be brought up again. Number two, the budget. Where is it? We haven't talked about it. We know that we're going to have a $1.1 million deficit at least. I predict two to two and a half million. We need staff input on this. Are we going to talk about it? Are you going to talk about it in May, June, when you got to approve it? How are you getting staff input? They're going to be gone. Everybody, you're going to just make those decisions without their input. I'm very worried about that. Number three, make a decision on interim and/or the superintendent. Don't wait until the last minute so you can use the excuse that it's going to be Attila. Don't. You need to be proactive, that's what you're put in the seat for. Make the decision. Finally, work on your to-do list, consolidated task force, compensation study, negotiations. It's your responsibility to push these things forward. The administration has given you information, start making decisions. Thank you for the time. I wish you the best of luck.
Thanks, Jeff. Alright, that's it for public comments. We are on to seven, Student Representative Report. This week at SPAS is the Power of Words Week, to help promote positive communication among the students and send an anti-bullying message to everyone. And it's been going on for the past eight to 10 years, and it's been really successful, so we're pretty excited about that. We have compliment grams and special announcements every day with little challenges like compliment people, compliment a teacher, you know, whatever, something happy. And this Wednesday, everyone's encouraged to wear blue, because it's going to be like an anti-bullying message. We're going to have a speaker on Friday during second, third, and fourth hours. And last Friday, we held an unannounced Code React drill with the help of four police officers. And according to them, the school was about silent in 30 seconds, which was pretty impressive, so we were really happy with that. Next Thursday, we're going to have a tornado drill at 1:45 PM, so it goes with Portage County tornado drill. And prom is going to be Saturday, April 25th, and the Friday before, the 24th, we're going to have a short assembly to announce the prom court. Thank you. WASB, Meg?
I just wanted to just update people on one legislative matter. And there's an article in Milwaukee last week that actually provided some hope. Wisconsin Senate Majority Leader Scott Fitzgerald indicated that his fellow Republican senators want to restore much or all of the $127 million that Governor Scott Walker has proposed cutting from public schools in the first year of his budget plan. He indicated the precise amount will depend on updated revenue projections that will be issued in the next few weeks. He indicates he's optimistic that the new revenue estimates will be higher than current estimates, and that there is definitely a commitment to take care of K-12 education. He also indicated that he wants GOP senators to increase K-12 per pupil spending, but again, limited to the second year of the budget, which has been a concern of ours. So I just wanted to update you, it's like kind of two steps forward, three steps back, one step forward, one step back, but there appears to be movement at least with respect to the Senate of questioning what Governor Walker has proposed for K through 12 funding.
If I can just follow up with that, I made some phone calls today because that article appeared in the Journal over the weekend. And I called down to Madison and talked with several people, and I think it's more than, in my view, it's more than just hope. There is a real strong feeling among the GOP majority that the, that the $127 million be put back in a place... back in place and that they look to giving an increase per pupil in the second year of the by annum. So there is a much, in my least, my view, talking with people today, a much stronger belief that the cuts are not going to be realized, so that's really positive news for us.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report, it's written out and in your packets. Anybody has any questions?
I just want to make a notation that number four is a separate Agenda Item 9G2, so I apologize that that's on there.
I would like to postpone the portion of the superintendent's report relating to Sam Levine until, at which time he can participate.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? Amy?
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Mr. Ebel?
Uh, no.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
It's a tie, four to four, so motion does not pass.
Okay. Any other questions on the superintendent's report? All right, we are on to the consent agenda, which covers minutes that are reflected in the, on the agenda, March 30th, April 6th.
I apologize, Angel. I guess I do want clarification of my email of why I was denied my request of, I guess nowadays with our technology being at the highest that we can get, why would he assume that it would be so much staff time to fulfill my request of getting the receipts from the conference when there was roughly maybe about 10 of us that went?
Well, what I relied upon was Bill's email back to you, so given what he stated, I felt it was, I felt it was inappropriate to ask the staff to do that, and so the process is that if you want to carry it forward, then there's a, the board policy indicates that you then can take that next step.
So there's two steps, either I can ask the board to vote on it, or I can ask for a public records request.
Well, I don't have the policy memorized, Kim, but there is a next step beyond my declining the request.
What would be the choice if I would walk into his office and talk to him at the time? Would I be able to do that like other board members?
If, you know, I can't vouch for what other people have done when I'm unaware, as I indicated the last time, when board members go to various offices. What I can tell you is, is that we have a protocol that is now board policy, and Bill forwarded me the email that he sent to you, and based on that email, I declined the request. The board policy has a next step if you wish to take that.
Okay, and as you know, I did request a public records request.
Right, and we responded, and we responded indicating that we had received it.
Anything else?
Can I just offer, can you, everybody's, everybody's results were in the bills the next month after, was everybody's.
The detail isn't in there.
No, the detail isn't in there.
That's what I'm asking for. Again, Trish, I don't care that was in there, I'm requesting for, so I don't have to go through hundreds of pages, hundreds of receipts. Nowadays, with our technology being the level that it's at, it should not take an amount of time that I should be denied. Next time, I will walk into the office, as other board members have done, and I can guarantee you, I will not get the same results, and yes, my tone is very frustrated right now, very. We can move on.
I'm going to respond. I have requested reports that are already in existence, they have been created, they're already there. We as board members have received copies of what everyone requested for reimbursement. To ask an administrator who is, who is, has a huge workload already to page through and provide line item by line item for a board member is micromanagement to the nth degree. It is not appropriate, it is not professional, it suggests a lack of trust on the part of those individuals. If you feel like you need that much detail, then you go in and page through, because you know what, we as board members, we're paid, we're paid very little, all right, and I would much rather use my time to take a look at and pursue what I'm interested in than expect one of our, us to pay an administrator $50 to $75, I don't know how much an hour, to wild goose chase a bunch of individual invoices. It's not, it's not done by, by school boards, and it is a level of micromanagement that is not acceptable.
I just thought I would get this for the media, because the media-
The media can request it themselves if they want it, Kim.
But I will get it so I would know that the media reports it correctly, okay, because the media has said that we overstated, there are certain board members that spent more money than other board members, and so I want to make sure that the public and the media knows exactly, and that's why I want it as simple as we can. You wait until the media, with your tone, starts putting headlines in your tone, or because you're hollering at me or yelling at me right now. Let's see what they say tomorrow about you, Meg Ehrler, and next time, again, I will walk into the office and I will waste the administrator's valuable time and sit there for 45 minutes and speak to them personally, but thank you for your comments.
I go through three ports on my own, Kim, I just request them, since they're already in existence.
All right, let's move on with this. I think everybody's got-
You need to address the clapping, the clapping has to stop. There's a certain decorum that we need.
Look at that, you're right.
I'm going to ask the audience to refrain from clapping, please, it's disruptive to the meeting. Thank you. All right, we are on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to-
To approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, any comments, questions, corrections?
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, we're now on to Business Services, and the first action is for a report from Trish Baker, the chair.
So we met last week, we were, actually, it was an abbreviated meeting due to the interviews that, well, the interview that didn't take place because of the internet going out, but a couple of things came up, the district depositories, that's something to vote on, and another piece that I thought that came up in the business meeting that I thought was really worthy of coming to the full board is the Plover Whiting School sprinkler system was completed. We had actually received a contract from Ellis Stone. The contract amount, the guaranteed maximum price was $274,000. It actually came in at $163,000, so $110,000 under budget, and there was a nice letter from Ellis Stone explaining why their original budget was so high, and then why they came in so much less, and why they had projected everything as they did. So that was a really nice thing that we got to deal with at the Business Services. We dealt with a couple of other things regarding signatures and who signs the checks for this next election, this next year after the election, and then we also dealt with the district depositories, which we could receive information from Dr. Owens about. It's pretty simple, it's just that stating that we will agree to work with these banks, and I think what Dr. Owens would tell us is that many of the schools have bank accounts with all of these, with many of the different banks, whatever is closest to the school, and that's why the list of depositories or the banks that we can work with is so long. My question to him was, why are there so many? Do we actually have accounts at each and one, each and every one of these? And the answer is probably yes, but it has to do with all of the different schools that we have, having small accounts at each of those banks.
Thank you. All right, number two for Business Services is an approval of the resolution designating school district depositories, which Trish just addressed.
And I will make the motion to approve the resolution as presented on the backside of the page.
Second.
It's very long, I'm not going to read it.
Any questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Educational Services, first thing is a report from the chair, Chris Scott.
Thank you. Educational Services Committee met on April 7. The two items on the agenda that we were able to talk about and have a presentation and discussion were the school counseling at the elementary level and an elementary and secondary enrollment update. The administration presented that they've been watching our student enrollment numbers in order to plan for staffing in the next school year. These numbers change from day to day and week to week, and they are being very diligent in monitoring those numbers to provide the appropriate FTE and support staff for each of the grade levels. We'll have more to come on that as the weeks go on. The main discussion and presentation given by Greg Neon and Val Fettin and their staff were about the roles and responsibilities of counselors versus social workers. It was really interesting to look at all of the information, the things that are covered, the responsibilities of these two groups. We have social workers, we do not have counselors, we have a number of reasons for that, and we are in a minority of the schools around the state that have counselors. Although we do have a comprehensive school counseling model, the increase in the numbers of students and their needs has our staff defining the roles of each so as to best serve our students, and our students are being served, but one of the things that they're looking at is a continuum of services so that they can prepare each of the students for the needs. Some of those are looking at the academic development, college and career readiness, social and emotional development, and although our students' needs are being met, the structure of completing the continuity of those services is being challenged. So we will be talking about that more, the administration will be coming forward, and there is a lot of information that these staff members have put into their positions and their roles to make sure that all of the students are covered. I think they're, one of the things they're doing is really looking at those two roles and what they need to be covering to best serve our students, and again, we'll have more conversation about that, and also how PBIS is included in this, and there'll be a large discussion about PBIS because our staff is doing amazing things. That presentation was, I wish people would come to the educational services meetings because if you want to know what's going on in our classrooms, that's the committee to come and see. We have people that are so dedicated to the needs of our students in so many different ways, and even though their job description may not show it, they're doing it, and that's a great thing to celebrate, so just want to thank the staff for that.
Thanks, Chris. Amy, if I need to go back to something on the agenda, how do I do it?
Go back to something on the agenda?
I think a vote count was wrong.
Which one?
The one on Sam's item.
No. Ms. Baker, Mr. Ebel, Ms. Faxon, Ms. Scott voted no?
No, I voted yes.
It was 5-3, that's what I had said, see?
It was 5-3, okay.
All right, so that will either get tabled or, what was the other request?
It was postponed.
Postponed, that's what you requested, okay, so sorry about that, Sam, as I was thinking, I, the numbers didn't match, okay.
So preliminary district enrollment information?
Dave or Keel?
Dave or Keel?
Preliminary enrollment.
Oh, certainly. Because Chris had talked about it, I thought, but what Dave Lockton and I wanted to do is share with you an update of our numbers as we go through this part of the school year. What we're doing is looking a lot at the staffing and the planning and preparation for next year. Some of that materials, a lot of that goes into our staffing plans and our staffing needs as we look at what we have as far as enrollment changes at different grade levels or at different content areas at the secondary level, and so those, one of those things is how those numbers will impact us as we move forward. We share those numbers now at this point, and we'll continue to update you, and hopefully then when we make decisions that affect staffing or materials purchase or moving of classrooms and things like that, that you'll have a little bit more background as to why those things needed to happen or what precipitated that. So as you look at the numbers, well, Dave, I'll let you talk about elementary.
Only briefly, I'd mention that, Chris, and others at the committee meetings, that it really is a moving target this time of year, is that the numbers are fluctuating. We get a printout of the numbers from Barbaroush regularly, and we can have a change in numbers of eight, 10, 12, 15 students in a couple of days, right, both coming in, going out, and also shifting around from different neighborhoods, and so we try to keep a handle on that because at some point, we have to, we're there now, we haven't had to make a decision about what we think staffing is going to look like at this moment and project forward, but there'll surely be changes. I have not been here a year yet, where we haven't seen some kind of fluctuation occur between now and the end of the year, as well as over the summer, of students moving in, students moving out and whatnot, and that's where we come back to talk to you then, to give you a report of what it looks like at that moment, we get as close as we can at that moment in time, but it's a moving target.
So we do see overall, we do see overall that we are about 50 students up at this time from last year, we think that's very good, and so we're in a fairly stable position as far as our enrollment overall, but you see the impact at different grade levels, a whole grade level may be down a whole class or two classes, and so that's the kind of shifting that we have to monitor.
Any questions for Keel or Dave on that? Thank you very much. All right, the next thing we have is a recommendation to approve the 2015-16 District Habitat for Humanity Memorandum of Understanding. It's in your packets.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2015-16 Memorandum of Understanding between the district and the Central Wisconsin Habitat for Humanity as attached.
And I will second that. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
All right, Human Resources, the first thing we have is a report from our Chair of Human Resources, Kim Sherrick.
Well, basically, we were asked to keep our reports short because of the meeting tonight in our closed session, so I will just say the only thing out of the six items, we did talk about two, but one is not on here per my, other than what I had requested, but we did talk about the Security Health Plan, which I think is presented in here, and then I also asked for the 2015-16 Teachers' Contracts to be included in here that are not, so if anybody wants a copy for them, because we will be voting on them next meeting, and if you're like me, we get our packets like on Friday night, and you have three days to read them, and I think contracts are very important, and we should give them the same dedication as we gave the administration, so if you guys want copy, I do have some here, and maybe we can have Amy run them off, and the rest we will let Florence or whoever's going to do the other items. Oh, the other thing I wanted to make a note of is on 9E4, I will be making a motion to vote on the increase, base wage increase for each individual employee group versus voting them in a lump sum. I don't think that's fair to any of those groups.
Can we do that without having adjusted? Okay.
I would like to have a copy of that contract, please.
I did do some doodling on there, so I figured board members would, so it's okay. Can we do it afterwards or break? Okay, sir, thank you, Trish. Sorry. Thank you, Trish.
Okay. Is that it, Kim?
Nope.
All right. Recommendations for employment, it's all in your packets, and I need a motion to approve those.
I will make a motion to approve the personal recommendation as presented.
I'll second. Any questions? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Ms. Vaxson.
Yes.
Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
All right. Next, we have the Security Health Plan Partnership Summary and Recommendations, which are exciting.
I'm going to be recusing myself on this.
Okay. Thank you. Attila, are you presenting?
Yeah. Florence and Tom, I think, and we have some SHP representatives, so do you want to, Florence, come and introduce them? Are they going to use the overhead? I don't know if Lori is here?
Yes.
Okay.
We have Laura Bresky here from the Security Health Plan along with Tamara Notaro. Did I pronounce that right?
Close it up.
Okay. Thank you. Who are going to just give us a little bit of information about the partnership agreement with Security Health and how we're going forward and the results that we've seen since we implemented the partnership two years ago.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're actually going into the third year of a three-year partnership that the district entered into with Security Health Plan to try to control costs over time, not only for the district but also for employees. And on the first page in the summary, you'll see where that savings has come to fruition.
Lori, are you referring to the memo?
Yes. This first page. Had Security Health Plan calculated the renewals based on our normal calculation of claims experience and so forth, the district would have realized a much higher increase over the last three years than the partnership agreement, which actually brings into participation from employees to help realize that by the different dials that are outlined within the agreement.
This is like really, it's huge. I mean, could you, I mean, describe the percentage of participation, I mean, of our employees who are participating, just so people out there realize it, because it is incredible, as well as the dollar amount of savings that because of that partnership and because of our employees, our district's saving. I think that's really important.
Absolutely. Yes. Actually, the first year was the renewal for July 2013, and what we did for that year, we just implemented the health assessment and biometric screenings of employees. We actually had 91% participation, which is the highest we've seen among many of our clients, so that was excellent participation. That resulted in a 2.5% renewal increase for the district. Had the participation agreement not been in place, we would have actually calculated the renewal closer to 11%, actually 10.9%.
Wow.
So that, those are some real dollar savings, again, not only for the district but for employees as well.
And was that the million dollar? Am I reading that table correctly? The premiums is?
Yes. The top line of Table B, the $1,048,000, was year one. Year two, we kept in this, we kept Dial One, which was the health assessment and biometric screenings again for employees as, excuse me, part of the calculation. We also added a second component, which was Dial Two, and that's loss ratio. Loss ratio is simply a premium dollars that we take in versus claim dollars that we pay out. The loss ratio last year was 95.3%, so basically for every dollar that Security Health Plan takes in, we pay out roughly about 95 cents of that dollar in claims. So the overall net result of the renewal last year was 5.5%. And again, had we calculated the renewal based on our normal renewal calculations that our underwriters do, it would have actually been a 16.7% increase. So again, those are some real dollars for not only the district but for employees as well.
I hate to say it, I just got 90% of eligible employees participated.
Yes.
2.230 million in savings.
Yes.
Because of the employees stepping up and participating at an incredible level.
Yeah. We've seen really great participation again.
And I would just say, it's such a win-win, and I really do, my company has security, but when I was looking for a term, I don't know if it was a term life, I was looking for a, an insurance policy for my son, and I went and they did, you know, a lot of the tests and that, and I said, you know, I can get this amount of money, and I said, you know what? That's not good enough. I'm going to change, and I took a lot of the tests, and that's a hard thing to do. Right from the beginning, I was in listening sessions to employees talking about it. It's really personal.
It is.
And it's really a shift. I have a family member who is actually doing that type of work for companies in New York, and it really is becoming about health issues, but that first step in, when you've never had to do that, talk about your health, talk about those issues. So kudos, really. Well, to the administration for coming up, you know, this kind of plan is great, but it's great without that participation.
Exactly.
It's really great. So thank you to both, because it is a win-win for the district and for our employees, I think.
Thank you. Now, we're actually going into the year three, the last year of the participation agreement as it is today. We had 91.4% of eligible employees that participated in the health assessment and biometrics. Again, those are phenomenal numbers. The loss ratio actually went down, which proves that things are working in that regard as well. And then we also added a, another, two components actually for Dial Three, or Year Three. Dial Three is actually introducing, and I lost my train of thought here, the personal health goals, which is going to, we're still going to have, ask people to complete their health assessment and biometric screenings as we've done in past years. Now we're adding another component to that, which is completing personal health goals. And those are either, there's eight different modules on our website as part of the health assessment, and then we also have two different campaigns. One is coming up this fall in September. It's Walktober, so that's a walking program. We also have one coming up next spring, which is to be determined yet, so we don't have that, but that will give employees an opportunity to earn more dollars either off of their premiums or towards their health reimbursement arrangement.
And could, is it okay? And could you talk a little bit about the portion of providing connection with other providers?
Yes.
Because that is really, that is so great. There are so many people, and I'm one of them, it's like, where do I go? The same test in five different places. The costs are different.
Yes, absolutely.
And you're providing an opportunity for them to have these different providers out there with the information.
Right. We actually introduced this year a tool on our website. It's called Smart Cost Advisor, and it really promotes transparency to allow people to actually shop for their care. I used the analogy in the employee meetings last Thursday, saying you don't take your car to a mechanic and say, well, just fix it. You want to know what you're going to be spending. We don't see that often in healthcare, and we're, by introducing this transparency tool, we are trying to allow some of that transparency to go through to employees. What we did, and this is Dial Four of the partnership agreement for this year, we've introduced 10 specific services that allow employees to shop for them, and then we at Security Health Plan are actually going to be doing a drawing each quarter for six members or employees who shop for these services, to be put into a drawing for a $500 Portage County Business Council gift card or gift certificate.
That's great.
So really, we want to prim note that shopping. And then the last part of the recommendation for 2015-2016 is to increase the emergency room copayment from $100 to $250 on the point of service and the indemnity plans, as well as basically making the indemnity one and indemnity two plan identical and eventually phasing out indemnity one. They would, there's really very subtle differences right now. There's a difference in an office visit copay and the emergency room copay, so those plans would actually for 2015 become identical per se, and then we would eventually phase out, so we wouldn't force anyone out of that indemnity one plan. We would just not allow additional enrollment into indemnity one. And the final recommendation would be for mandatory generic prescriptions, and I've used, in the employee meetings, I used the example of, say, Lipitor. It's a, it's a high-cost brand name, prescription for a 90-day supply, you're looking at about $250. There is a generic equivalent out there, so what would happen is the cost of Lipitor would be $250. The generic cost is about 15, so the difference between the two of those is about $237, and then you'd also be responsible for the $5 generic copay on the plan. So you have a choice of either paying roughly $240 for Lipitor if you choose to take it or $5 for the generic.
I just want to add a couple of things to what Lori said. First of all, I want to thank Tamara and Lori for working with us the past several months to make sure that we got the next year right. The second thing is, on the second side of the memo, I just want to highlight a couple of things. It is true that the district over the past three years has saved considerable dollars moving forward with regard to its health insurance premiums, but if you look at number D1, simply by offering those 10 shoppable services that Lori mentioned, we're going to see a 2% reduction in our premium rate than what it would have been otherwise. So these savings in dollars are not, oh my gosh, all of a sudden we've got a pot of a million or a pot of 2 million. These are monies that, sitting here looking at next year's budget, we won't have to spend and worry about getting those dollars. So this 2% reduction is simply offering the 10 to our employees. And by the way, we have 809 subscribers from our 1,000 employees. That's how many take advantage of our insurance. The second thing is that the incentive also, as Lori pointed out, is the six $500 Portage County gift cards every quarter. So that's 24 of those at $500 each, and if you, if you or a family member take advantage of shopping one of those 10 services, your name gets put into that hat. The second item on that page has to do with the ER copay and why is it that we and SHP are recommending the increase? If you look at the last paragraph under number two, what we've identified, and thanks to the detail work that SHP keeps, we have folks who go into the ER for general symptoms, acute pharyngitis, acute bronchitis, influenza, a general medical exam, acute and chronic sinusitis, and a follow-up examination, all of which are items that should be serviced at a walk-in, an urgent care, or your doctor's office, not at an ER, because the cost of doing that is exorbitant, and our ER costs are significantly high. And so what we're trying to do is steer people with symptoms and conditions that they should be serviced through an urgent care walk-in or doctor's office in that direction. I think Lori identified the indemnity one and two, that we would not allow any more people to enter indemnity one. We wouldn't just eliminate it. We would keep it in place, actually. And then if you look at the highlighted portion under number four, if the ER copay and indemnity one and two plans, making them similar, are approved, the district would realize an additional 1.1% reduction in the premium. So in this third year, going into the third year, you, the board members who were here when we first proposed the concept might remember that we talked about the line that was going at about a 45-degree angle year after year, that is, insurance premiums were going up. Some people are satisfied to either slow that line down or to make it flat. Our goal was to actually bend the line so it was going down, and in the third year, we've achieved that primarily due to our staff participation in the biometric and health assessment screening, and then SHP saying, we're going to incentivize your staff to do even more. So these changes that are proposed are going to save employees money, they're going to save the district money, and it's going to keep us on a trajectory reducing our health insurance costs.
Thanks. Any other questions? Chris, is your hand up?
No, I'm sorry. I'm good.
Anything else on security health? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Lori. Thanks, Tamara.
All right. The next thing is a recommendation for non-represented employee.
I got a vote on that.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
So I will move to approve the 2015-16 District Security Health Plan, design changes for emergency room copay indemnity one and two plans, and mandatory generic program as outlined above.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Can I just make one comment? This really, we deal with the same thing at the county, the very extensive and very good quality health insurance, and this is a good plan, and it seems like the, I guess I'll quote Attila, the line is really very flat, and that's terrific, and I think that that has a lot to do with the high participation in the biometrics, and that speaks a lot about our staff and the fact that they're willing to, you know, work on taking care of themselves, which ultimately keeps the cost of the program down, and that's wonderful. I mean, that's good. This is very, very, very expensive stuff, and it's more expensive at the county. We actually spend a lot more money on it at the county, so it's great to see that it's still a really good quality health insurance policy, but at a little bit better deal.
Thank you. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Ms. Vaxson.
Yes.
Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. They suspect the table, and now we have a recommendation for non-represented employee base wage increases, and at Ms. Sherrick's request, what we'll do is we'll vote on them individually.
No, other than just what the memo indicated, that we have settled with two of the represented groups. The SPAEA in the district has not yet reached a conclusion regarding 13-14, and we felt that it was important that the other employee groups do receive a 1%, and given the news over the weekend, even before then, we felt that this was something that the district could afford on an ongoing basis, that is, sustain it, and so you have the recommendation there in front of you.
Yep.
Do we have the cost for each group?
We do, Jeff. And we do have that. I have it. Tom, are you out there?
He left. No.
Tom left?
Tom's left.
Dave, did Tom leave?
Yeah, he's, he's gone.
I do have that, Jeff. He and I talked about that earlier today, and I did have that sheet. I'll have to go get it. If you want to postpone that vote, I can, see if I can get that.
Sure. Do we need a motion to do that?
No, we can just come back to that.
All right. Let's postpone that till we have that. All right. A resolution to amend the flexible benefit plan agreement with diversified benefit services.
And, Madam President, I'm recusing myself for this.
Okay. Is this Attila as well?
It's Florence's name on it, but...
Florence, are you here? No problem.
We're skipping ahead, so you're not out of place, so.
Okay.
Okay. Hold on. We just called Florence up.
No, no problem.
Okay.
We're on the 9E5, just to let you know, Florence, the resolution to amend the flexible benefit.
Yes, yes. The IRS regulation...
allow the maximum amount to be contributed by employees.
Thank you. Okay. So we need a motion on that?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions while we have Florence up here? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Vaxton.
Yes.
Mr. Presley.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten. Sorry, recused. Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Evil.
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Let's return back. Thanks, Florence.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we're going to go through these individually, the at-will employees, or, sorry, all of them. So this is a 1% base wage increase.
Right. I apologize for not having the sheet with me. So the, the total amount at 1% for the employees for, for 13-14, now this, this would include, well, are you, you just want to know the groups that I'm recommending, or that we're recommending, Jeff? Is that right?
Sure.
Okay. Sheet has a lot of other information in it. I apologize. The approximate total is about $110,000. So it does not include SPAEA, does not include AFSMI, and does not include Teamsters.
No, I'm talking about an individual breakdown, the administrators at will.
Oh, sure. So the administrators, the administrators is somewhere around, around $35,000. And the reason I say around is because the initial calculation included everybody, but not everybody is going to realize that, because we had people start. We actually had eight people who were new in 13-14, so they would not realize an increase. And we have a group of other peoples who won't, a group of other people, excuse me, who won't be affected by it, so it's not the total administrative team. So it's about $35,000, $37,000.
Could you tell me on an individual basis approximately what, how much each individual will be getting at?
It's based on their salary, Lisa, and I don't, I don't have their individual names here.
I don't need their individual names. I'm just saying what's their average increase.
I don't have that information here. All I have is 1%.
I understand the 1%, but what I'm saying is dollar value, 1% for someone who's making, you know, 50,000 is different than 1%. Someone's making 10,000. And I'm just curious what the dollar value that the employee will actually gain, the difference.
I'd have to have a list of all the employees with all their base wages, hourly and annual, and calculate that. I don't have that detail in front of me.
Can you just continue going down?
Absolutely.
So administrators, you said, was like 35?
It was about 35,000. Clerical was a titch over 11,000. Educational assistance is about 45,000. Miscellaneous, which would be at-will, is about 1,000. Support services is 8,800.
Food service supervisor.
I'm sorry. Food service, for some reason, food service is not listed on here, but they, they would be. I'm going to guess that that number is probably in the $10,000 range, given the number. That, that's a rough estimate. So if you, if you added those up, and I may have included the, in my initial number, about 100,000, I may have included the transportation workers, which has been settled. So that's still right around 100,000, I think.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting, until we have actual numbers and get a chance to look at that fancy-dancy Tom Owens', which is really neat. He kind of puts numbers in, and he shows us where the budget is. I would really like to see these numbers put in there. So I would like, I'm going to, again, I'm going to make a motion to put this off until the next meeting where we can get substantial numbers, and we have a chance to take a look at them and get all of our answers, our questions answered.
I will second that motion. Any questions or comments on that? Yep.
Has it been to HR?
No, this has not.
So wouldn't it be logical that it goes to HR first, and then, that it there, and then comes back to the board?
You'd think. Would think. I would have a problem with it, but I don't know if I'm going to be the chairperson next time, but yes, I believe it should have went that route.
What is the will of the board?
Well, you have a motion and a second.
I'd like to amend that motion, that it goes to committee before it comes back to the board.
All right. Now we get into Roberts' rules. Can I withdraw my second? I'm, I, I think it makes sense to go to the committee.
Well, you don't have, okay.
I mean, I'm agreeing with her. I think it should go to committee. I like that plan. I think that also gives us enough time to digest this with the additional information.
Well, you don't have to. Second, you can second her motion, and then we'd vote on the amendment, and then you would vote on the amended motion.
I'm glad we have a Roberts' rules person here.
Or Amy, can we, I'll pull it back, and I can change my motion.
Sure.
You have to pull yours back.
I'll pull.
You have to pull your second back, I believe.
I'll pull it back, whatever.
Then I will pull mine back, but I would like to make the motion then that the recommendation for the 2013-14 base, oh my gosh, wage increase for the non-represented employees goes to the HR committee first.
I'll second that.
Is that what you're looking for, Lisa?
Yes.
Yes. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Evil.
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler.
Yes.
Ms. Vaxton.
Yes.
Mr. Presley.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero with one abstention.
We are on six, recommendation to implement base wage increase for the 2012-2013 District SPAEA collective bargaining agreement.
Madam President, again, I'll be recusing myself.
Yep.
As you'll see from the memo in front of you, you have a resolution to implement the 2012-13 collective bargaining final offer from the Stevens Point area Public School, School District Board of Education to the SPAEA. We have met with the SPAEA and have been meeting with them since December 18th, as the memo says, during the last negotiation session after the memo that was sent to SPAEA in February informing them that the board had offered and confirmed its final offer of the 1.5% for the 12-13 school year, that if we did not reach agreement at the March meeting, that the board would impose. And so you see the recommended resolution, if passed tonight, would impose the 1.5% for the SPAEA.
Any, I need a motion before we can have a discussion. So move. Second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second discussion. All right. Let me tell you about my conversation then with our attorney, just so that the board knows exactly where we stand, and we don't do something that people will wish we hadn't or had wished we had done differently. The two things that we need in order to implement something or to impose something is clarification that something is a final offer, that there's absolutely no doubt that what we offer is final. The second thing is that the party does not agree to that. So, so it has to be given a final offer, and it has to be refused. To the best of my knowledge, that was handled orally.
And in writing in the February memo to the SPAEA, we did indicate that the board's final offer was 1.5%, and that if they did not tentatively agree to it at the end of the March, I think it was 18th meeting, when we met with them last, that the board would consider imposing. And we did tell them that reiterated at the table, at the bargaining table, that because we did not reach a tentative agreement, because they offered the 1.5 for 12-13, but conditioned it upon the next three years in reaching an agreement for each of those contracts. So I reiterated to them at the end of the meeting that the board had made a decision that its final offer was 1.5%, as indicated in the memo that was sent to them in February, and that I would take their offer back to the board with what they had, but according to the last memo and according to the meetings with the board, that was their final offer, and the board's intent was to impose if a TA wasn't reached. So that was the board's direction.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I am going to ask, as it's obviously a controversial subject, our two team members, do you believe that we, it was clear that we gave a final offer and that they rejected the final offer?
I was just going to let Meg speak first, since she always says I speak first. But basically, we did, it was mentioned that we were basically questioning them if we were at impasse, and they said, no, they were not at that point. All they wanted to do was take our offer. They weren't on that side. What Flo just said is exactly what she did say at the meeting, but they said they, they did not feel that they were at impasse. They wanted us to take the offer to the board and see what the board decided.
Are you going to talk? I have a question.
No, I think, Kim, you're correct.
Okay.
Flo indicated that it was her, it was her impression that we were at impasse, and the union indicated that they did not feel that we were at impasse. They did not believe we were at impasse.
Strongly felt.
So here's my question. If the board said, this is our final offer, and sent a letter and said, if you aren't to accept this offer, we're going to go to impasse, right? So if then someone comes back and says, oh, well, we want to, we want to look at the four years, we want the four, the board to look at those four years, isn't that saying you are not accepting that one-year offer that the board said, we are going to offer that? That's our final offer? I'm just asking.
Well, I just, I want to clarify, because this is real important. Under current law, my understanding is that you can only bargain one contract. You can bargain one contract, you're bargaining it separate, and then you can bargain a second contract, and you're bargaining it separate. Same with a third, and you're bargaining it separate. Back in, under previous law, you could choose to, to bargain and agree to a one-year, a two-year, a three-year, however long you wanted. Am I, am I stating that correctly? So, so we have been, we have an offer, I mean, we were bargaining 12-13 with the SPAEA, and we also have exchanged offers with respect to 13-14. So that's what management had been providing up until the last meeting. And then the last meeting, SPAEA brought forward four one-years. They, we had proposed 1.5% for the first year, and, and the SPAEA, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but the SPAEA indicated that they would agree to the 1.5% in the first year if the board would agree on the offers that they had for the other three years. So does, does that make sense? But, but that's really, that's no longer, I don't know that that's allowed under law anymore, that you can condition one contract.
That's correct.
On what's happening with respect to another contract. It's got to be separate. So I think that's part of where some confusion may have risen in the, in, in the process of the past, the last negotiation. And as Patrick indicated, it was, it was a very kind of emotional negotiation.
Okay. So I'm going to sum up what I've heard, and you can correct it. Jeff, do you have something to say?
I just had a couple of questions. Did we send the letter?
Yes.
And when was that sent?
February.
February 11th. I can't swear to that, but I know it was in February.
Or approved there on February 9th.
Okay. We approved it on February 9th.
Okay.
Florence, was that sent by email, or was that sent by hard copy?
Email to the bargaining team, the SPAEA's bargaining team.
And what was the union's last offer then to us?
Their last offer to us was the four one-year agreements, 12-13 at 1.5, 13-14 at 1.5, 14-15 at 1.46, and 15-16 at 1.54. And they rejected our 12-13 at 1.5, conditional upon reaching an agreement on all four years.
Yeah. So I think that, to be really clear, I think I was the one that made the motion to authorize the letter to be sent, because there's a certain part of me that just says, you know what, rip the Band-Aid off and let's get this over with. And, and I know, I take responsibility, those are my words, and I have said that a number of times. But I also have to say, I had this impression in my head that we had been negotiating with them since before December. I don't know why, but I thought that we had been negotiating with them since like October, so a couple of months longer. At this point, what I'm hearing is, is that we're actually closer to three and a half months if you go from the end of March to the December date. And, and I guess the other piece that, so it's not that, it's not as long as I thought it was, and I want to own that, misunderstanding of my, my own misunderstanding. But I guess I want to, I'm very concerned about the, I don't know, I'm hesitant to call it a misunderstanding, but that, is this our last offer? They've come back with something else. And at this point, I think we're all really on the same page, that it's 1.5, that probably isn't going to change. And, but that's not what they, that's not what they left with. And at this point, I don't think that it would be fair to do this. I, I'm not saying I'm going to open this can of worms up for a year, but I think that one more bargaining session would be a good thing. I also have to say, I, I don't think that we, as a board, have had a formal meeting where we actually did talk about this four-year plan. And I don't know if that's, I mean, I just feel like maybe we should have.
We did in close, the last close session, we had a full discussion of it, and even in the session before, we had introduced where you were sitting.
That's the night I was very sick. Yeah, so I apologize. That's correct. That's correct. But I'm, I'm going to say right now, I'm not going to vote in favor of this today. Maybe I will in a month, but right now, it sounds to me like there's too much that is in the gray area for me. And I can't support this as it is right now. I'd like to see us vote no on this, or move it back until there's been at least one more bargaining session.
When is the next bargaining session, Florence?
March. March.
April.
I'm sorry, April 22nd. Yes, thank you.
So a week from Wednesday.
Yes.
Okay.
Kim? I just want to make sure, just in case they didn't hear, or everybody didn't hear, it was brought to the board. I mean, because Meg and I, we told them at the negotiation, we would make sure that their offer was, and Florence did bring it. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew we did.
That's my mistake.
And say what our discussion was, but yes, so.
That's, I, and I want to say, I was really feeling very badly that night, and my health was just having a nasty-
Well, then I will tell you some other things you said that night.
Oh!
I'm just kidding.
Way too close.
Don't do that.
Jeff?
Yes. I think it's pretty clear that the work that Florence has done here was, she carried out our will to the T. This is what we instructed her to do. Now, I, I don't, I don't feel right about going back on that. I think she did a very good job. She was very thorough and very detail-oriented. That was our decision.
I'll just make a comment. We all looked at the numbers, okay? We looked at 1112, we looked at 1213. We all decided that this was what we could do right now. For a few years, we couldn't get an agreement on two years. And when we brought this forward, I'll just speak for myself. It's like, we want to give our teachers the money that they've been waiting to get. And I don't think, I can't speak for anyone else, but this is the amount we agreed on. Those were the numbers we looked at, and that was a specific reason. You can say one more meeting, but to say, "We'll consider that final offer if you consider these other three years." It took us forever just to get, to get the last one done. I don't think the board is going to change that 1.5. And if I were on a team, and I have no idea what the other side, you know, what they talk about, or what it is. But if someone was offering me that, and I wanted them to also consider the other three years, I'd say, "Okay, I'll take that year. Now, can we talk about the other three years?" I wouldn't make it contingent on something that we've already said. This is where we're going. So, I'm just saying.
Jeff?
We've discussed this, I mean, we've done the same thing that they are actually doing to us. We did 1112 and 1213 in our bargaining. This is the most progress that we've seen in, well, since we got rid of Shayna Lewis's firm. And, you know, negotiation-wise, this, this year is the most progress we've seen in four years, which is awesome. Why shut that down? One more meeting? Is it gonna make that big of a difference? It's really not. The new board can decide if they want to, you know, dig their heels in and say, "1.5," you know, that's it. But we've opened up negotiations for 1314, 1415. Again, we wanted that all along, to try to get all of these done so we can get all of the pay that our staff deserves. So I will not be voting in favor of this. I think, it doesn't hurt to talk. And it's only a week away.
Please don't-
Yeah, that's... The concern I have, and it's been a concern that's been brought to the board by, by our staff, is we are not only negotiating 1213, but we're negotiating 1314. And we have had many, 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 I have had communications from staff that feels very strongly that we need to move forward on certain inequities that were identified in the Carlson-Detman and possible propose a, a, a pay plan, salary structure, et cetera, that, that, you know, happened long before I got on the board and has been sitting there. And we've had people come in front of us and say, "That's what's focused, that's, that's what they want the board's focus on." And we can't, I don't believe we will be fiscally responsible to open that up until we have determined the back pay we owe and what that impact is on the overall picture of the financial standing of the district. I feel very strongly, as a board member, that we should, we need to settle the contract. We need to move on and settle the next contract. But we also need to open up the books, and we need to let people know and understand what is available. Because I believe we're at that crossroads where if we go down one road too far in terms of the dollars that are being invested, we're not going to go, be able to go down the other road in the same manner. And, and that, to me, as a board member, is, is a concern. And, you know, I mean, I speak from the ability to have had information provided to me as a board member in, in closed session that makes me feel that. But that, to me, is the concern. I think we need to get the contract settled, because I need, I think we need to focus on what many of our staff are telling us, which is moving forward on that broader picture. And that's my concern. If we postpone a month, or we postpone another two months, we're just kicking that can down the road. And it's, and I haven't been on, I mean, I've only been on the board since last August, but it just seems to me that can's been kicked down the road a long time. We're all aware of what's happening in Wisconsin, and, you know, of, of the, of, of the pie that continues to grow smaller and smaller and smaller. And I think that we need to, to recognize that. And we need to, you know, provide the information to staff as to what's there and, and work to create that roadmap for the future that many of them have indicated to us that that's what their priority is.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
We all have our heels dug in. I mean, we've all kind of come to our positions here. But I have to say, you know, I'm gonna do something I haven't done a lot recently. I'm gonna agree with Jeff. We're talking. We are talking. And while, while the conversation is strained and difficult, we are talking. I spent a long time this weekend looking at the Carlson-Detman stuff. And you know what? It would be so much better if we were having a conversation at the same time about the Carlson-Detman. But this just got kicked to the side. It just hasn't been addressed. I have a couple of teachers who are in my neighborhood, who are first and second-year teachers in our district. And I actually have to confess, I kind of talked to them this weekend a little bit, and, and I, we, the, this, this, this vote makes no difference to them, because they haven't been here long enough. It does not going to make any difference to them at all. What they want is, they want this. And I want this. And, you know, we almost didn't even look at it until I demanded that I get, put it back on the agenda a couple of months ago. I, I, I want to look at the Carlson-Detman. And if, if we are talking with our teachers, and we are working hand in hand, I think that we can accomplish far more than us just laying down the heavy, heavy hand and saying, "This is what we're going to do, and this is how it's going to be." I'm not saying that it might not be that way in a month, but I think that we need to be having a conversation about a pay plan. We have taken, and taken, and taken. And we have got to work with our most valuable resource, which is our teachers. And right now, as Jeff said, we're talking. Let's just continue that conversation a little bit longer. And let's get this back on the table to start looking at what we can do with this.
Kim?
As I've been reminded through the negotiations and through the HR committee, that we cannot put with the negotiations. And Flo, if I'm restating this, this is what I've been told from Flo. We can't, we can't talk about the same thing. So in my HR committee, I've been asking for that and a payment plan since at least well before January, correct?
At the-
Okay, and by no means am I trying to throw you underneath the bus. I just want to say that I have been working on it. I could not get an agreement with the people that I need to help me with it. So it's not that all of the board members have been trying to sweep it under the rug. I believe that is very important, and this will come along if we can work on that simultaneously, working down. Because that is more important than this.
This, you're right, this is more important.
It is, and I've been talking, I mean, we all talked to the staff, and that's important. But they are two separate items, along with the other thing I requested, which really is not on this agenda. And again, I have no headway with that either. So three different items we're talking about. But I do agree that we need to get going on that.
I just really, we are subject to a relative finite amount of dollars. And it's not the dollars we would choose. It is not the dollars that our community would necessarily choose. But it is what the current legislature and the current governor is choosing. We can talk all we want about creating a pay plan or a salary schedule, or, but, but it's only as good as the money that stands behind it. And we need to be fiscally responsible with the dollars that are there, because, because they're not getting any bigger. I mean, you know, last month, they were shrinking by 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. And that's still out there. I mean, there is the potential for that. So again, that's my concern. I, I just think it's important that we settle the contracts so that we understand what our back pay is, what the liability is, and we get that paid, and get, get that made whole. And then we begin to have the conversation about the two separate entities. One is bargaining at the table with respect to, what? Now, I'm gonna get my numbers screwed up. 1314, 1415? And the other is looking at that pay plan. But, but both of them coalesce in the middle, which is Tom Owens and Superintendent Wenninger telling us, "This is the money we've got. And if we do a 1% here, this is what we're left with, to do that." Or a one and a half percent here, this is what we're left to do that. So I, again, I, I really think it's important that we settle, we settle the contracts. We have settled with respect to all of our other employee groups for 12, for 13, at one and a half percent. Is that correct?
Three, the other two represented groups, yes?
Yes, and, and the non-represented groups. I, I just, I understand. I, I just don't know that I can in good conscience make a change in terms of what is on the table for 1213, if, if it's, if we wait a month, or, or two months.
Just one other comment to Meg, what you said. I mean, who wouldn't want to have that pay plan in place, or a structure, or that discussion and that? But without being current, who would do that? Put in, put in a plan that you work on and say, "Well, here's the plan. Here's what we looked at, here's what we got. Oh, guess what? We don't have the money to do what this plan says." Why would you do that? Why would you do it to your employees or the district? If you're not even settled up to the current year, how do you know what that, that wouldn't even be real? What are you gonna do? And to plan for four years from now, nobody does, with uncertainty and money. I'm wanting so much to say, "Please, let's, let's take the money, or take it."
Okay, I think I'm gonna halt the conversation. It's, it's not my habit, or hasn't been for the last 11 months, to give my opinion. And I hope people know that that's because I'm the chair, and my job is to not give my opinion. It's to keep a conversation going. I was told that very clearly the first time I sat in this chair. I'm being clear, because this is my last meeting, and I want to make sure that I'm not misunderstood in any way. I think it's pretty clear what the board is offering. I think it's pretty clear that's not changing. My job as president, for seven more days, is to make sure that this board is safe from litigation and that we respect and follow all the laws. And I'm going to say, at this point, I don't believe that the lines are clean enough in this. While I do support giving people money, and I want to give people money, I would like there to be a very clean sense of agreement about where we're going and why we're doing this. I hope I've been really clear, so I can't be misunderstood on an exit. So.
Can I ask just a clarification question on what you said?
You may.
What wasn't done properly in-
I want it in writing.
Okay.
That's what wasn't done.
On paper, right.
I want on paper saying, "This is an impasse." And then there is absolutely no question, period. If there are no further discussion, we need to have a vote.
So I guess the question for me is, is that a motion that you're looking for tonight?
We already have a motion.
We have a motion. Can you read the motion, Amy?
No, no, no. I'm saying, if you want it in writing, how does that occur without the board taking action?
Right. It feels very disrespectful to me to demand that a board I'm not going to be a part of do anything. I'm just trying to tell you how I feel and what I think, and I'll vote the way I vote. However, it's my opinion, after speaking to our attorney, that it should be very clear in writing. So no, I can't make that motion or really even ask for it. I guess if that's what the board wants to do, that's what we can do.
We have a little bit of a timing problem. If your next, Florence, when's the next bargain?
22nd.
We don't have a board meeting between now and then, unless you call a special meeting. So the board will have to decide how it wants to go. Either postpone that bargain until the new board is, until the 27th, when whatever board is there has a chance to discuss it in closed session, or have a special meeting, or not.
What is the will of the board? Couple days to call a special meeting? Yes. Would you like me to do so? Okay.
Could we not just make another motion to ask them to put it, you know, ask our HR director to put it in writing? To have something for December, or, excuse me, April 22nd? I mean, it's still underneath this agenda item.
You can't make a motion right now, because you already have a motion.
Right. Once, once we get that one done, could we not make another motion to ask or direct our HR director to?
I actually think we've already done that. I actually think we, as a board, have already done that when we sent that memo out in February.
You did.
It's, it's the misunderstanding, or whatever you want to call it on the part of the union, that they, they don't agree that we're at an impasse.
Right, exactly. That's what I need in writing.
They, they feel that, that they've got more to talk about.
You don't need two sides to agree-
No.
-on an impasse. You only need one. But the other side needs to understand that you have declared impasse. And that's what I'm sensing is not, has not been made really clear. So that's what I'd like to see in writing.
And when you're talking about calling a special meeting, or special, when would you, you would put that on the two new board members, or the new board, or before then?
I don't know. What do you want me to do?
Well, the negoti, the next negotiation is the 22nd. So if the board wants something presented at that meeting, at that negotiation, then there would have to be a special meeting called.
Between now and then.
Between now and next Wednesday.
And I would suggest that, because getting- And I would suggest that, because getting dates together with the nine or the 10 people that are all there is sometimes very hard. So I would prefer, so we can keep the ball rolling, is call a special session. It won't take long. Unfortunately, we can't talk about it tonight.
It needs to be a special session after the negotiation meeting, but before the 27th.
Before the 22nd.
So the negotiating team knows what's to...
Next Monday, the 20th.
What do we want to do with the motion that's on the floor? Let's go there before we talk about a...
Well, if you have two of you who want to withdraw their motion, their second, it'll be scratched, otherwise you can vote on it.
What is the motion again, Amy?
To approve the implementation of base wage increase for the 2012, 2013 District SPAEA collective bargaining agreement.
So it's to approve the impasse. Make sure I'm clear. Right?
Did I make it?
Yeah.
Chris and Jeff.
Okay. Well, if we're gonna have a special meeting, I'll take back my motion.
Withdraw the second.
Withdraw it.
Okay, so, Monday, the 20th. Is everybody available?
There's a consortium meeting, but I'm happy to not go.
I think this is more important. Agreed.
I do want to note, and it's not a problem, I've already spoken with Florence about it, I am out of town on the 22nd. But, but you guys are perfectly capable of doing it. I mean, Florence and Tom are lead, and Kim, you're perfectly fine with doing it without me being there.
All right, so the 20th, 6:30?
I would ask if it could be a little later, because I've actually got my Park Ridge meeting, but...
What time are you done?
About 6:45.
How about 7 o'clock?
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
7 o'clock, Monday, the 20th. I will call a special session. Okay.
We have to make a motion to table this.
Did you withdraw your motion?
I withdrew mine.
She withdrew it.
All right. Next round of policy and legislation. I actually need to call our interviewee, as I told him we'd be calling him 45 minutes ago. So let's take a five-minute break, so I can take care of that. Okay, I'm calling us back to order.
Now I can shy.
Amy, did you get my request to cancel both those, both reservations, please?
The hotel instead of you, sorry. The first thing we have is a report from Meg Erler, the head of policy and legislation.
And my report is that there isn't a report. We can go ahead and, because we really just acted on the policies that are in front of you, so we can just proceed to them.
Fantastic. Go ahead, lead us through.
I'll lead you through. Okay, let me bring up my packet. Let me pull it up here. So, Policy and Rule Dissemination 151.2. The main gist of that is in line with current technology. The policy changes will be put on the email system. It used to be that they were delivered hard copy to all the schools, and placed in binders, and so what the main recommendation is that all district staff will be notified of policy changes via the district's email system, and the website shall serve as the database of policies for staff and the public, with website posting an email notification to staff. Attila, we just were working through 151.2. So, main gist is that it's an email, bringing us into the modern day.
Modern day.
Yeah.
Okay. I need a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes?
Is there a reason, or should there be the placement of the handbook included in this? Because we have policy and rules, and, I mean, to me, it just makes sense that we should incorporate the handbook also in this.
In terms of the email?
In the whole dissemination of any changes in policy, any changes in rules, any changes in handbook.
I guess, do you know, so, well, you're maybe just asking a question, how are changes in the handbook?
Well, I'm asking if it should be added to this. Because right now, we don't have anything, and it just seemed like a logical place to add it.
Guess I turn to the superintendent.
You know, I'm not aware that we don't have anything regarding the handbook. I'd have to go back, because I know that several changes were made when the handbook was first instituted. This has to, this policy has to do with any policy or rules dissemination. It could have a separate section about the handbook, or a statement about the handbook. I don't think there's any harm in that.
Yes, and I just think that would be an appropriate place to incorporate it.
So...
Do some research on this. I'd have to go back and look at, see other policies. I wouldn't want to do this right here at this moment.
Right, right. Yeah, we can send it back to committee.
Yes.
Well, and the one thing that we have become aware of, as we've been working through these, you know, with respect, and now there is a handbook, is that policy changes oftentimes have implications with respect to needed changes in the handbook.
Right.
So, I know administration is working to make sure that that's occurring, so, that's fine.
So we'll postpone this, or go back to committee?
Sure.
We need you to...
I don't know that I had a motion. I think I was just...
I did.
Or did you?
Okay, I'm taking it back.
And I'll take mine back.
Again.
We've been down this road.
All right. Okay. Go ahead, Meg.
Oh, well, the next one is 371, Student Organization and Clubs, and this is one of the final pieces with respect to the inclusion of the additional classification of students. Do you want to speak to that at all, Attila?
No, it's just including 411, which was changed at the last meeting, and it just incorporates what it says.
And we felt that this, you know, this student organizations, clubs, used to list all of the various classifications slash categories. What we're doing now is we're referencing 411. So if we add, or if that's amended, we won't have to come back and amend this one, because it'll just flow.
Right.
Yes?
I do have a question. Under the rules, in the second paragraph, it says, "All authorized clubs, organizations shall meet in the school facility." I'm not sure why that needs to be in there, because a lot of our clubs and organizations have different events, different meetings, you know, fundraisers, all that type of stuff that are off school facilities. So somehow that needs to be...
Actually, it needs to be in there, because there, the following clause is the key clause, except as approved by the principal. And the reason that's in there is, is that so no sponsor, no coach, nobody involved in an activity or a club can take kids someplace that does not have the specific approval of the principal, and otherwise will meet in the school facility. And that's to avoid any kind of issues that may arise.
I think it's just a kind of a left-handed way of saying, they can't do it.
They can't do what?
They can't, it says, except as, so that second part of the sentence is what makes the first part.
It's a protection.
All right. Do we have a motion, Amy?
I'll move to adopt it.
I'll second. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries 8 to 0.
The next one is 511, Exhibit A, and it's the Notice of Employment to Non-Discrimination Policy that really goes as a partner with the policy that we passed last month. Attila, do you want to speak to it?
Just, we needed, we didn't bring this one forward at the time, and this one does include the statement of equal opportunity at the end.
I would move approval of 511 Exhibit A. A second.
Questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries 8 to 0.
The next item is 535.2, Job Sharing for Teachers, and I'm gonna ask Superintendent Wenninger to...
So we needed to clear this up, because we had a situation this year where we've had a couple of teachers who have been job sharing, who have asked for a third year of job sharing, and what we needed to do was clean up the language, and it's exactly what we've done. I'm glad to take any questions about the changes that were made. One of the things that was asked for at the policy committee, which I didn't find out until after the packet was published, is that what are the benefit rates that teachers get when they job share? And it's prorated at the amount. So their cost is prorated at the amount that they are job sharing. So if it's a 50%, they pay 50%, and they're covered 50%, or they'll pay the other 50% to be fully paid. So it's a prorated amount. The other changes are, I think, fairly obvious, and I'd be glad to address any questions.
I would move approval of policy 535.2 as recommended.
Second.
I'll second it. Oh, sorry. Did you?
I'm not taking it back.
It's Chris. It's Chris.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Totten?
I'm gonna abstain.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries 7 to 0 with one abstention.
536. And, Attila, do you want to speak to that one?
I'm gonna recuse myself from this one.
536, the Reduction Force for Teachers, that's the one that was just deleted.
The top paragraph, or the whole thing was, yeah, the whole thing was deleted, because it doesn't apply anymore. There's the handbook, right, what's in the handbook?
We need a motion to delete it?
Yeah.
Okay, I will move to delete it. I will second.
Any questions about that? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Motion carries 7 to 0.
Okay. Just want to take one second to thank Chris, Kim, Trish, and Meg for heading the committees. We went back on that roll, and nobody really knew how it was gonna go, but it went very well. I think we got a ton of work done. I'm really grateful for what the leadership of you guys provided. Next is General, the Recommendation to Approve the Process for Filling the Board Vacancy. This is an action item.
So what I've done is provided the board with two options in terms of filling the vacancy. The first option is to make an announcement through the local media, beginning tomorrow, having that deadline for a weekend, two days, and then on Monday, the 27th, two weeks from tonight, the board would undergo the selection process to fill that vacancy. The other option is to have the announcement tomorrow, have the deadline be Monday, May the 4th, and then at the May 11th meeting to fill the vacancy. So it's really up to the board to decide which option it chooses.
With all of the various things we have on the table, large, large things on the table, quite frankly, I think we should get somebody on the board. I think we should get it appointed as quickly as possible. So I will move to adopt Option 1.
Second.
Great. Discussion?
I think the main benefit of that is, is that the individual will then be seated for our organizational meeting, which makes a lot of sense. So I'm in support of that as well.
Anyone else?
I don't think they'll be seated for the organizational meeting, because that's on the 27th.
Right.
That's what Option 1 is. That's actually me. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
I have a question. Are there two motions, sir?
By choosing Option 1, you authorize the local media, so it's okay.
Okay. Just checking.
Thanks.
Motion carries 8 to 0.
All right. The next one under General is, we have Sam and Judy here, welcome. And we are going into closed session to do an interview tonight. For our superintendent, we need to decide as a board if we're comfortable with them being in closed session with us. They are not participating, they are listening, as it's likely they will be part of the decision-making process that occurs. So, it is, we're, Attila checked with insurance for us, there's no liability, they're completely covered, there's no danger in that regard.
So you have a revised memo at your places, I just want to make sure that everybody has that.
It's white, looks like this.
So I will make the motion for discussion.
So you're making a motion?
Invite in to approve them for...
Yes. Okay, so we need a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so now we can have the discussion. And this is not, you guys, this is not a black and white issue. This is truly our decision, so we just need to discuss the pros and cons of it. Yep.
So I sit on several different boards, and I asked one board member, a different board that I sit on, who's been in public office for decades, and asked his opinion about this particular item, and he probably had the best comment. He goes, "Are you guys nuts?" That was his exact comment, when I suggested the idea that two newly-elected board members who have not taken their oath of office sit in a closed session. They'll have three years to do this. Trust me, they'll love it for the next three years. I understand the method behind it, and why, that we would want them to sit on it, but at the end of the day, they do not sit on this board. It has not been past practice of this board to allow this. It shouldn't be the future practice. They don't do it anywhere else, and it's irresponsible of us. It is the current sitting board's responsibility, if we choose to make a decision, whatever that may be, from this interview tonight, by them sitting in the room, they have no right in that room, unfortunately. Yes, they've been elected, but their term does not start yet.
Other comments? Yep.
I have a question. Our legal didn't have a problem with us?
No, legal actually said that the board, it's not a matter of having a right or not a right. If the board chooses to invite people into closed session, the board has that right to do so. So it's up to the board to decide, and they can do it on whatever basis they wish.
And we have done that in the past, though. I mean, there have been other people in the...
Well, we've had other people in closed session, and I had, I didn't have the time to go back through every closed session for the last four and a half years. But I will tell you that we have, at least on one occasion, invited into the room, a board member elects, so that they could hear part of the conversation, because there was going to be a vote in another month or two regarding a particular issue. I recall that happening once. I just, I haven't had time to go back and do that kind of research.
I have a couple things. And it has no bearing on Judy or Sam at all. Okay, write down the date. I would agree with Jeff. Write the date down. No, I would, but here's the, he's writing the date down. We actually had, we actually had someone who was elected as a board member, and right before he was gonna take his oath, he got a job somewhere else, and he never took the oath. Now, does that mean if they're sitting in, they get information, they're gonna take it with them wherever they go? No. But I don't think we should set the... We actually had someone who was elected as a board member, and right before he was going to take his oath, he got a job somewhere else, and he never took the oath. Now, does that mean if they're sitting in and they get information, they're going to take it with them wherever they go? No. But I don't think we should set the precedent. I really don't. And it isn't because of our candidates. I think we're going to have plenty of information, plenty of discussions moving forward, but I'm not comfortable with it.
Jeff?
The way this is written, that's not precedent-setting, is it? Because it specifically names two individuals in this.
But it is.
Does that set a precedent?
Yeah.
We've never done it before. I don't really have a dog in this, a bone in this fight at all. I was asked to research it, which I did do. I just want to make sure that the facts are there. It is not true, we have not done it before. We have, but again, it's up to the board to decide. The board can invite any person they wish into closed session for an express purpose. It doesn't set a precedent at all. Again, I don't care one way or another, I'm just trying to give you the facts so you can be informed and make an informed decision. I really don't care.
Yes.
And as long as I've been on the board, which is now, I'm finishing out my sixth year, thank God, we've never done it. I mean, the only people that has ever been in closed session is, and I've meant to every closed session meeting I've, we've ever had, we've never invited anybody that we were not speaking of for expulsions or whatever like that, or a staff member. Again, it has nothing to do with the two newly-elected. I just don't think we need to open that door and invite them, so mark this one. I'm going to agree with Chris with a smile.
Well, I was the board member that requested it, and maybe if I explain, or maybe it will have no bearing at all. My whole rationale behind it is that we will be interviewing an interim candidate tonight, and whether or not that individual winds up being a possibility, I thought it would be helpful that if there wasn't a decision made tonight, that the new board members would have the chance to meet and hear the interview. I'm more than happy to have the members excused for the current board to do any and all deliberation with respect to the decision that the current board makes, but my motivation was that if no decision is made tonight, but this candidate is still a possibility after tonight, that it would be very helpful for the board that will be moving forward to have met that candidate in the same way that we had and heard that individual's responses to the question. I'm comfortable, as I said, because I've been on the board, and in the time I've been on the board, there was an occasion where there was an individual in the boardroom with us, in fact, private citizen, but the individual provided, they were there to benefit the decision that we, as a board, were going to make. They were excused before we had any conversations about actually making the decision. So, I don't think it's, I think it's, I don't want to say it's common, but I don't think it's rare to invite individuals into closed session who the board feels will be helpful in terms of good decision-making, and this is just a real, unique situation where we have new board members that are going to be seated in two weeks, and I thought it would be helpful if they met the same individual that we're meeting. So, that was my motivation behind it.
I, just, oh, I thought, yeah, just quick, before I stepped in the office, the closed session before I did, the board decided to cut $1.1 million, so the first time I had to sit on the board is we had to catch up within two weeks of getting it. I just think we're opening our, a can of worms that we don't want to open up. That's all I'm going to say. I mean, every board member coming on, we've talked about this every time, every year since I've been here, when a new board member, should we start inviting them a week earlier? I mean, they could be coming to the meetings, and I see Sam has been coming to almost every meeting and almost every committee meeting, trying to catch up on himself. I just don't think we need to open this can of worms. I just don't think it's a good idea. And per the gentleman that Jeff had talked to, I want to say his words exactly, so.
All right, do we want to keep, go ahead, Trish.
The only thing I want to say is that I just, I think it's kind of, I don't, to me personally, it doesn't really make much difference at all. I don't really care. I'm not, like, feel strongly one way or another when you guys sit in there, but I kind of think it's unfair to our candidate and unfair to them if they don't, because I don't, I'm not quite certain we're going to make a decision tonight. We might, we might, but if we don't, it'll get passed off onto the next board, and they'll be part of it, and they're going to miss something, and-
I guess if you'd been clear on the deliberation part, I might have said, wait a minute, if there's no discussion other than the interview?
That was my intent, that they strictly sat in, and forgive me if I didn't, that was my, that was my intent, was that they sit in on the individual, that they meet them in the way that we're going to meet them, because ultimately, if they're going to make the decision, we're not going to be able to reinvent that for them.
Well, I guess I could change my mind again. Sorry.
Because I agreed with you?
No.
Okay, Jeff?
No. I would tell you.
I'm going to say it again, that this individual that I spoke with has 40-plus years of public service, 40, well-respected-
How many superintendents did he hire?
He may, well, it would tell who it is.
Yeah, yeah.
The issue is, when it comes down to it, you take an oath of office for a reason. That oath of office is that you accept the responsibilities of your position. Those two individuals have not taken their oath. As the example given, they could potentially move out of the district. They don't have to accept their oath, but yet they're, we're going to invite them in, they don't, you don't have to accept your oath.
But you're, but you're still subject to confidentiality, Jeff, whether you've accepted an oath or not, yes, anyone in closed session is.
We might as well, I mean, invite Bozo the Clown. I mean, why not? He's bound by confidentiality.
No offense.
But what purpose-
No offense, you guys.
But what purpose does it serve? Because they're not going to be involved in the decision process tonight. If we make that decision, it's pretty much moot if they sat in that or not, but number two, it goes back to they have not taken their oath. That's what it comes down to. You want to look at the legalities of it? Yes, we can invite anybody, Bozo the Clown, into closed session, but the purpose of them being there, they should have a purpose in making that decision at that point in time when we do our closed session. I mean, with the logic that you guys are going on right now, anybody running for the school board, and they file their paperwork in January, could potentially be on the school board, so during that process, if, if they may be on the school board and we're deciding who the superintendent, we should have included them in our conversations with the superintendent, and whether or not these are the viable candidates. They missed out on all of that, and now they, it just, where do you stop?
Can I just say, we, we may be asking those two to be making a decision, you'll just be a citizen at that point, we may be asking them to make a, make a decision, the biggest decision they're ever going to make on someone that they have an opportunity to meet tonight, not deliberate on, but they have an opportunity to meet. I mean, quite frankly, I think it's kind of respectful, but I'm not-
Lisa?
In all elections, there's a period of time where the old board members leave, the new ones come. It's in the middle of whatever. That's just the way it is. They haven't taken an oath. So, what about the individual we're going to appoint next time? So, what, should we table tonight's meeting? Table all our business till we get a full board again? And then what happens if someone quits or gets sick? Then do we stop everything and wait until we get another person because it's not fair to them to not have all the information? This, it's, while some think it's very, you know, well, it can go either way, you know, but we have business at hand, no matter when the election takes place, when people are appointed, elected, whatever, we're in the middle of business. You can't go back, like negotiations, you can't go back in history and say, oh, you know, no, they shouldn't, this is, this is the way politics are. This is the way a board is run, so.
Okay, well, do we want to just go to the vote?
Yep.
We're there. I mean, I think everybody's shared their opinion. We have a motion?
Do I need to, do I need to make clear, would people, I mean, should I pull it back and make clear that they will be there? I guess I'd like, did I make the motion?
I think so.
Yeah, you made the motion.
Okay, because I guess I'd like to, if the person that seconded, to pull it back to clarify that they would be present for the interview alone and would be excused for the board's deliberations.
Well, you moved-
I have a 30-second statement to sit back and ease your mind.
No, you can't, sorry.
Meg, you moved, your motion was, as the motion was presented, which is to approve the inclusion of board members-elect, Judy Ranout and Sam Levin, in the regular, regular April 13, 2015, board meeting closed session as observers and listeners, is what the motion was presented as.
And I seconded it, right?
Yes.
Okay, so-
You just have to say for the interview portion only.
For the interview portion only. Yeah, and I'll second that change amendment.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Sherrick?
No.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries five to three.
I don't want to be here. All right. We are on to meeting dates, locations, and future agenda items. This actually has action on it. It was a requested agenda item, but because of what it is, we need an agreement that it is going to be on the agenda at all. We've, we've been just putting things on the agenda, but this one require, we need a, we need a board consensus this should be on the agenda. And please don't forget, you'll get emails, but the 20th, we're going to meet at 7:00. So, that's not on here because we decided it tonight, but that's April 20, 7:00. Okay, so, let's go with consideration to place on the second regular April 27, 2015, board meeting agenda for action, a resolution creating a subunit for purposes of negotiations with AFSMI, SPAEA, and Teamsters. So, let's, let's go with number one first. If, people don't remember, this is going based off of the recommendations of an opinion that was given in open session at the last meeting from our attorney. So. I will second. All right, discussion? Yes?
Back to the items that I said during public session, or public comment, I'm sorry. Stop attacking your own. I mean, we spend and waste so many dollars attacking individual board members. These two agenda items, one and two, the real truth about it, the memos are already created without the board's consent, and now we're talking about whether or not to do it? Ridiculous. I mean, stop it. Just stop the nonsense and just do the business of the board. I will not be supporting this because the only reason behind it is you want to exclude a member not only of their elected position and their right to attend a closed session, but to squash any type of First Amendment rights that person has. Not acceptable.
Anyone else?
I just want to clarify your statement that you said it was a recommendation, and it was not a recommendation. It was listed as an additional step that the board may take, and so it wasn't part of the conclusion, and he did not make a recommendation.
So, clarified. Yes?
No, I, I just think we should vote on it. I think we all know how we feel.
I guess, can you clarify what this is all about?
It was a board member request to be on the agenda, so it is, well, I don't have the legal opinion in front of me, and I don't want to misspeak it. It's the, the option that they discussed in there about creating a subunit. So, it's voting on having that on the agenda or not.
So, could the person who requested it explain?
What the purpose was behind? I mean, we've always asked them, I mean, usually that whoever requested it says, hey, what is the reasoning why you requested it?
It typically has their name.
The attorney's opinion, I believe, was very clear that under one statute in Wisconsin law, duly-elected board members have the right to be present at board meetings. There is a separate and competing Wisconsin statute that discusses conflict of interest and the potential liability that attaches to the individual as well as other board members, as well as the board, as well as potential lawsuits for the district in terms of negation of decisions made if an individual is found to have participated in a manner that constitutes a conflict of interest. I've said it from the beginning, I believe very strongly, like tonight, if we're in open session and I recuse myself, I can remain in the room like every other member of the public can. If we're in closed session, I also believe very strongly, from a conflict of interest purpose, that I should be recusing myself from the vote and from the room. I believe that participation occurs. I believe, for me, it has a chilling effect on my ability to participate as a board member when I know that a member of our board has admitted that they have a when I know that a member of our board has admitted that they have a conflict of interest under that statute, but they're staying in the room. And so I believe the attorney was very clear in his, in his information, that the best course of action for Ms. Totten is to remove herself from the room, because it will prevent us from the potential liability. Herself, each of us as individuals, our board as a unit, and our school district, so I, and the attorney's recommendation, therefore, was the options, in the event Ms. Totten chooses to continue to remain in the room, is that we could create a subunit for the purpose of collective bargaining, that would include all of the members of the board other than Ms. Totten.
Kim?
So are we going to create a subunit so when we talk about the budget inside closed session? Because I believe we will have somebody here that is going to have to recuse themselves every time we talk about a budget.
I think we're out of open records at this point, or rather, open meetings. We have to make a decision on this request to be on the agenda, or rather, that it go on the next agenda. We're talking about substance here, we're getting into a lot of substance, and I don't think that's appropriate. This wasn't noticed up for discussion and action, it was only noticed up...
It was just her explanation of why she asked for it to be on, so you're right, though. So let's go to a vote.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
No.
It was Ms. Totten.
I'm sorry, Ms. Totten, sorry, I take it back. I thought she said Scott.
No.
I apologize.
Ms. Baker?
Um, yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Scherick?
No.
Motion carries five to three.
Okay, and the second is consideration to place on the second regular April 27th, 2015 board meeting agenda for action, a resolution to file a complaint with the district attorney regarding possible board member conflict of interest, also action.
I have a question about this one.
Sure.
Would this be something in closed session?
Would this be, would it happen in closed session? Yes, but we need to decide if it's going on the agenda, and, well, I don't, I'm not going to, is that the next freaking agenda? I don't know.
The answer is that the, the discussion about this item, if it gets into personal histories under that exemption, it could, but otherwise, it's going to be an open. The resolution definitely would be an open, and any other conversation would have to be an open unless it falls under a very narrow, specific exemption.
Okay, so I'll move to put this on the April 27th agenda.
Is there a second?
Moving on.
Guys, for lack of a second. Okay. Is it B that's gone?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, B does not exist anymore, so I will read A and C. 19.85, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction, specifically an elementary teacher. 19.85, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction specifically discussing any and all confidential situations surrounding the hiring of a superintendent, including but not limited to the interviewing of interim candidates. I need a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Scherick?
I would prefer that this is an open session, but no, it can be done enclosed, nope.
Ms. Totten?
While I know this can be done enclosed, I prefer it to be an open, no.
Motion carries five to three.
All right, we're in closed session.
At 9:32.